I just want to say that this is about the youth of our city. I'm going to tell you something that's obvious, it's a platitude, but I believe it. The youth of our city are the wealth of our city, and we have the choice of investing in them, honoring them, helping them along, or squandering that wealth. So, I want to thank everybody for being here and looking at our future, which is a lot of these young people here. Thank you very much.
Being a high school teacher, I know the importance of our youth. They are our future. Without commitment to our youth, then our future is pretty bleak. So, I believe that, you know, we need to invest, not only for today, but of course, for tomorrow. So, thank you.
Coming into the parking lot, the parking lot's pretty full. I was expecting to see every one of these chairs full. I want you to understand, there's over 200,000 people, close to a quarter million people in the city. You look around, who's sitting next to you in the back of you? You're representing a lot of people for each one of you that are in this room. You're making a statement. I wish that we had more people in this room, but we don't. You've taken the time out of your day, your busy family, your time away from whatever you want to eat, whatever you want to do and be involved. That's what it takes to be involved in the City of Oxnard. The city is worth fighting for. The city has been, it's my city. I happen to be an elected councilman right now. We don't know what's going to happen in the future, but no matter what happens in the future, the people that are elected to serve you are going to take care of you the best that they can, but they need you to watch them and hold them accountable. And I want to thank the organization that put this on. It's a CAG, City of Oxnard's group. All of those people do everything they can to make this a better place for their families, their families' families in the future, and the people that came before them. And that's something that they should be applauded. Every one of these guys on the panel, every one of the members that couldn't be here, all the CAGs that are not represented here tonight, those people should be the ones that we should applaud. And I want to thank the fellow councilmen that I serve with, all five of us. All five of us try to do the best job we can for this city. Thank you.
I just want to say a few words. First of all, I want to thank the Community Relations Commission, all the sponsoring organizations in this distinguished panel of community leaders for taking time out of their schedule to engage you, and I hope in the future that we can do more of these to engage the public. And that's really the job of the Community Relations Commission, is to reach out to people and to engage them. So, let's give them a round of applause, can we please? So, I just wanted to, and of course, the code always comes in when you want to read something, but I wanted to read something to you very quickly, and it has a lot to do with community relations. "We cannot seek achievement for ourselves and forget about the progress and prosperity of our community. Our ambitions must be broad enough to include the aspirations and the needs of others, for their sake and for our own." And that was Cesar Chavez. I wanted to just say to the leaders on this panel and to our Community Relations Commission, with a special focus on the youth, not only present, but the youth in our community, that one of the things I've noticed, and I think many of you have noticed, is that there's been a lot of disagreement in this community, throughout the state and throughout the nation. And we should never allow disagreement. You know, disagreement is healthy, and we should never view disagreement as something that is unhealthy. And by human nature, the way we are, and I'm this way too, sometimes disagreement can be an excuse for disengagement. And once people become disengaged, we see that people also become intolerant. And I think it's very, very important for the leaders here and for the Community Relations Commission, that we impart our value system of tolerance in this community, to say that as Americans, we share an ideal. And that ideal, ladies and gentlemen, we never quite get to that ideal, because democracy is an ideal. We never quite get there. But when it comes to tolerance, we need to all do a better job. All of us need to reach out to other people, especially those people that we disagree with. Because we see that intolerance has not led, in this nation, in the state, and even possibly here in the city, to the best outcomes. And just think about it for a second. What's going on in Oxnard today? What's going on in the state? What's going on throughout the nation? And I think it's so important that when it comes to engaging people, that we can look at people in the eyes that we disagree with. We could shake their hands. We could give somebody a hug. We can respect them, and we never lose our dignity, and we never lose the dignity for other human beings. That we say in this community, when others become intolerant, we have to settle down and not become overly excited, and then become intolerant ourselves. We have to be the grownups in the room that stand up and say, "Look, take a deep breath. Look at me in the eyes, and try to understand what I'm saying. Try to reach out to other people and do the same. Try to, when someone says something that's hurtful, try not to respond with another hurtful comment or response. Try to respond in a way that you can engage people." And that's the job of this amazing commission. You know, I haven't always agreed with the commission. I appointed everyone on this commission with the concurrence of the city manager, and I think it's really healthy that this commission and I have not always agreed. There's people on this panel up here, I haven't always agreed with them, but you know, I respect them a lot. And I think it's a healthy sign that we have a Community Relations Commission where maybe even amongst themselves, or even with the mayor or the city council, they don't agree. But you know what? That doesn't mean we can't work together. And that's the job of the Community Relations Commission. That's the job of these leaders here in the community, and I join them. I'm part of them, one of many leaders in the community. And we're never going to give up, and we're going to never lose hope, and we're never going to lose faith that here in the City of Oxnard, it doesn't matter what anybody says about us, or what we say to each other or to ourselves, we're never going to give up on striving for that real American ideal. And that ideal of democracy, it's inherent that tolerance for other people and tolerance for disagreement is part of our democracy. So, welcome to this wonderful gathering, and I'm looking forward to hearing what these great people have to say. Thank you very much.
So, at this time, we're going to, well, I do want to actually do some acknowledgements, some thank yous. First and foremost, it really, our commission really wishes to thank the event logistics coordinator and our secretary, commission secretary Luis Coreca. Thank you so much, Luis, for all your hard work on this event. Really appreciate that. Assistant City Manager Jesus Nava has been always supportive of our commission, so thank you, Jesus. Public Information Officer Carrie Carew. Another great supporters of ours and helpful with our commission, Martha Guillen. She worked check-in, thank you so much, in the city manager's office, and chair of our multicultural festival. And Marlene Guido, she's actually doing the videography today. Thank you so much, Marlene, always really supportive of our commission. Luli Lopez is here, working check-in at the city manager's office as well. Thank you, Luli. Oxnard City Corps and Performing Arts Center staff. So, thank you so much for everybody who helped out today. We really appreciate it. And I'm going to also get one more shout-out. Melissa Valdez from the City, from the Oxnard Police Department did a lot of promotion for us. Thank you, Melissa, great supporters of our commission. This time, I'm going to turn over the mic to our moderator, Adam Lopez.
Before we continue, we proceed with this panel discussion, I'm going to invite my colleague, Mario Quintana, to come up. He's going to explain a little bit the objective behind the discussion tonight, and how this, tonight this town hall came about.
It's a great opportunity for us as a commission to really have an impact on our community. And I can tell you why we put this commission together, or actually why we put this event together. Just this last year, we had our multicultural festival, which was an amazing event, probably the best event we've had in a long time. We had a peace march at the same time, and you know, we came back feeling really good about ourselves that weekend. And then we had two, unfortunately, shootings, two young men. And to me, it was, you know, we have a great event that takes place, and we're celebratory, and we feel great about ourselves, but then we see what's going on in the community. And we think to ourselves, we came back at our next meeting, which was a week or two later, and we said, "Well, what can we do to really have an impact?" It's nice to do a march, it's nice to have an event, but we have to have a real discussion of how we affect the next generation. We may not be able to do much for adults currently in a situation like this, but maybe the impact that we can have is with the youth, the next generation of kids in the next 10 to 15 years. So, you know, and then we've gotten questions about why we're even involved. And if you look at our bylaws, it'll state, "The powers of our commission is to analyze, define, and investigate community relations issues and needs in the city, and advise the city council on matters involving group prejudice, racial tension, intolerance, or differences in treatment, or favoritism of persons on a basis other than individual merit. And to promote mutual understanding and respect among all residents of the city, and work to discourage and prevent practices involving group prejudices, racial tension, intolerance, or differences in treatment of favoritism or persons on basis other than individual merit." Now, the individuals that we are targeting are the at-risk youth. That's the group that we're looking at. Are they getting treated fairly? Are they getting their fair shake? Are we looking at them and seeing them that they are our future too? Are they positively represented by our community? That's the reason for this commission hearing tonight, to understand where our resources are spent, understanding where every angle we can have an effect and impact. That's why we're here tonight, and I thank everyone for participating in a very, very important conversation. Thank you.
Before we continue, I will introduce the panelists tonight. Starting from the left side, we have Officer Nick Curtis, who's a school resource officer for five years representing the Oxnard Police Department. Next to him, we have Dr. Angela Timmons, licensed admission from Channel Island University, California City University, Channel Islands. Next, we have Mark Barella, chief probation officer from Ventura County, serving over 30 years for the county of Ventura. Next, we have interim city manager, also chief of police, and recently man of the year. 30 years, 28 years serving the City of Oxnard, Scott Whitney. Next, we have Director of Cultural and Community Services for the City of Oxnard, serving for two years, Ingrid Harding. Next, we have gang intervention consultant and expert, National Police Clergy Reverend Edgar Mojorco, serving for 30 years, also founder of Hope Boys. Next to him, we have Dr. Cesar Morales, superintendent of Oxnard School District, serving for Last but not least, we have Anthony Martinez, representing City of Impact. He's case manager, serving for seven years for the City of Oxnard. Thank you. A couple of reminders, all panelists will have three minutes to answer each question. You will all have the opportunity to answer each of those questions. I highly encourage you to please speak only what's relevant to that specific question, and let's try to refrain, refrain from, like I said, building up to your answer, as I will have to cut you short, and I apologize as I do ahead of time. So, we'll go ahead and start with Officer Curtis at the end there. And just I want to remind also the public here, you will have an opportunity to share your concerns, to ask questions during our Q and A session. First question is this: Is there a strategy to work with this population through prevention currently in your organization or your line of work?
Definitely. I know as a school resource officer, we have many officers who come into the schools and do presentations and try to impact the kids at that level while they're on campus. That way, we can try to target as many, as many kids as we can while they're at school. That's in addition to, you know, in the patrol setting, our neighborhood policing team has more of a chance to impact the youth while they're out in the community in their homes or, you know, in a situation where it's not always a good situation where our youth is in contact with police, but our neighborhood policing team has a chance to contact these youths on a more of a, a better setting than a normal patrol officer who's going from call to call, where they can contact the youth and hopefully try to present them with more opportunities for them to make better choices.
Thank you very much.
Question is, is there a strategy? Absolutely, there is a strategy. And that strategy comes from within us. That strategy brings together people, and it's about mentoring. There's an overused phrase, but I think it's very apropos, that it takes a village. And within the, in that concept of village, are people. And it's the people, it is the people in the village that make the community. And within the village, we have leaders, and it is the leadership's responsibility to identify other individuals within the village that can provide guidance to our youth, that can provide pathways. Back in the day, and I know I only have three minutes, but back in the day, when I think of the village, I remember that we could go next door and borrow a cup of sugar. We could go next door and ask the person to, "Would you watch my kid?" Today, we, because we're so very busy trying to earn a living in Southern California, it's very difficult to develop friendships and develop that kind of bond that we had back in the day. But I do believe that the strategy is the village. Now, in addition, I'm a part of an organization, and many of you are part of organizations that provide mentorship, Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated. We have programs for our youth. Embodied is for the men, and we have the GEMS, which is a mentoring program for the young ladies. And within those mentoring programs, we do provide lessons on self-esteem, on self-worth, learning to make good choices, managing money, and various other programs that we have for our embodied as well as our young ladies.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barella.
Good evening. Now, I'm going to start off by giving you some statistics. On the juvenile justice system throughout the state of California, seen historic changes. We've seen 60% drop in juvenile detention throughout the state, 73% drop in felony arrests throughout the state. Ventura County's no different. We've seen 54% drop in juvenile incarceration here in Ventura County, and a 60% drop in youth citations in Ventura County. So, I'm throwing that out to you because I think the system as a whole is doing something right. We're headed in the right direction. Where I see the two big areas for juvenile justice to be involved is at the diversion end, identifying low-level offenders that we can divert from the system and hook them into good community-based resources where their needs are getting met, there's caring adults and good programming. That'll keep them out of the juvenile justice system. I also see an opportunity to work with our youth that are referred to the school SAR process. We all know that truancy is the first big at-risk indicator that something is going on in the home, and if we don't intervene at that level, we're going to see some problems on the, on the other side. It's going to result to kids going further into the system. So, I see those as two opportunities for juvenile justice to push the envelope forward, to start focusing on prevention and early intervention, and that's what our focus is going to be moving forward.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Yes, thank you, Adam. So, for me, for us in the police department, when you talk about strategy, one of the big strategy changes is to change the culture within our community, within the city. What I mean by that is, people see police officers not just as, and I say mostly young people, they see police officers not just as the enforcers, but more the guardian, the mentor, the positive role model. That's going to have a big change, and that helps change the culture within the department. So, you have to do it within the department, that you set the expectation. So, when we hire local, that's, that's very important, I think, for public safety, particularly for police. We're out there enforcing the laws. You hire local, one, you set the tone, you set the expectations from the top, that we are going to be the mentors, the role models out in the community. And then you also try to get the community to see our officers as, as role models, as mentors. So, that's one part of the strategy, is you change the culture. I went to a disproportionate policing, disproportionate enforcement policing class up in Oregon, and somebody, somebody from the community spoke and said, "You know, when we call the police," and she lived in a low-income projects, was what she called it, "we call the police, we don't actually always expect you to solve our problem, we just want a, a positive role model." So, old-school, traditional policing, you show up, you take somebody to jail, you solve the problem. That's not, that's not modern-day policing, that's not what we do. So, we're trying to change the culture. Two, we're looking for partnerships. We know that there's not enough resources to go around, so we, we're looking for partnerships. We've partnered, and we're going to continue to partner with everybody up here. We partner with probation, Mark talked about wanting to, and, and we're all on board with this, reduce the number of juvenile arrests, juvenile citations. We partner with probation. We have a great program with probation. We partnered with the schools. We partner with Pau, several CPOs that are represented here. We look for opportunities to partner. And then just to wrap it up, I'll say, we also, and it goes hand-in-hand with limited resources, we try to leverage the resources that we have. We're always going to look to leverage the resources. So, hopefully have, have more opportunities to talk in more depth about that stuff.
Thank you, Chief Whitney. I will repeat the, repeat the question for those individuals who just walked in, and for refresh the memory, everybody else. Is there a strategy to work with this population through prevention currently in your organization or your line of work?
Yes, good evening. So, the Cultural and Community Services Department, the strategy is primarily focused on prevention. So, that's through Recreation and Community Services. Like Scott mentioned, we have a Police Activities League. We have several youth centers located throughout the community. We're working on developing arts education programs so that kids can express themselves through the arts. We also have the Oxnard Public Library, and that serves as a safe place for the youth to, to read and to just get away from their, their circumstances. City Core is one of the big programs that we have in the department, and that's a youth development program that provides youth employment opportunities and service opportunities. And one of the neat things with that program most recently is that it's expanded to the fifth grade. And so, now we're able to, we've launched a couple of pilot programs in the elementary schools where we can start getting kids at a younger age to become acclimated with the program and kind of work their way up through City Core. Another important piece of what we do, and like Scott mentioned, is through collaboration and partnerships. And so, we have a contract with the Oxnard School District where we provide after-school programming in all 20 schools, as well as the Wyonimi School District. And we also just formalized an MOU with the Oxnard Union High School District, where we'll be working together between City Core and helping those kids complete their high school education or equivalent. So, again, I would just say, our focus is primarily prevention, and it's through collaboration and partnerships, especially with limited resources. It's the only way that we're really able to have an impact on the community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harding. Reverend Mojorco.
Yes, to be able to have an effective strategy to engage a community and reduce crime, you have to have a three-pronged approach, and different organizations can carry out one of the prongs. And you have to have prevention, of course, intervention, and if it's from law enforcement, it's suppression, but if it's from the community, it's more of a reaction. Reaction is, for example, somebody's already incarcerated, we had been working with them, but they got picked up a, a charge, a drug use charge, a 9550 violation, they get put in cars and, and in jail. There's a different approach with that particular individual. But the three-pronged approach is, must be done in a proper order to be able to accomplish a task of reducing crime. And the initial should be, usually, to stop the bleeding, reduce the shootings, as they mentioned, has to be intervention, because when you get to the hospital, they try to stop the bleeding or, or see how they can ease the situation. Then you develop strategies to prevention to avoid the same situation. These three prongs must be done via community engagement. We understand the police can't do it by itself, one organization can't do it by itself, we know the schools definitely can't do it by themselves, it has to be all of us working together. Now, when we talk about unity, it's just, it sounds good, it's a good preachy thing, but unity needs to be people in the same mindset with similar goals to reach the youth and accomplish a task of reducing crime. One of them has to be the development of untapped resources, sharing resources, all that kind of different strategies. And like, we work with the police, of course, and, and I'm going to be working strong with the school districts, we definitely work with probation, to see how we can share resources and be able to accomplish each other's task for the benefit of everybody. So, it must carry a strategy of, of getting community involvement. Plus, there has to be constant recruitment of, of the people in the community to get them involved. There has to be training, deployment, assignments, and so forth, to be able to accomplish a task. So, I believe that an effective strategy city-wide, which we've actually done before, by 2011, I believe crime had dropped drastically, and I believe gang-related homicides were down to one or two. One is bad enough, but at least we're working down to reducing that altogether as one people. One last thing is, I actually want to acknowledge my colleague David Garcia. He and him and I were the founders of, raise your hand, David, founders of Peacemakers. And one day, in one day, one night, we had 100 volunteers hit the streets out there in El Dorado to try to calm the community down and keep the peace, and we did that over and over. Peace marches are great, but what happens after? This is what I tell my colleagues, the pastors, hopefully they won't get upset.
15 seconds.
Sorry. I tell them, "It's good to pray, but what do you do after? You can pray all you want, praying a magic wand. God sometimes is maybe God is praying for us to do something." Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Dr. Cesar Morales.
In the school district, we have the benefit, the commonality between educating students and working with at-risk youth is the commitment to know your students. I think we have to make a deep commitment to know our students, know their backgrounds, know their realities, and talk to them. I think it's very easy for any organization to have a report and respond attitude, where you report something that's wrong, or something that you see is wrong with our youth, and then expect for others to respond to that. I would like to think that we need to have a respond, report, and respond by more people. And here's what I mean by that, is the initial adult who is working with the youth and identifies them from any of the warning signs of either being withdrawn, being with people that maybe leading them down the wrong path, dealing with home issues, dealing with issues related to trauma, related to poverty, and, and different things that are precursors that we know exist in the research, that initial person, and I would like to think I have a 2,000-employee head start at identifying issues with children with the 18,000 preschool through eighth-grade students that I work with. And we need to respond initially to that child individually, report it to, to those that are dedicated to this within our system. I pride myself in the fact that over the last five years, our district has invested $3.4 million in ongoing resources with the counselors at every one of our schools, including our elementary schools, and a full-time outreach worker at every one of our schools as the people within the system that are our front line. But they can only do the work if all of us are reporting some issues, that then we, we respond to our children first, we report it, and then we respond by a greater group. My Director of People's Services, Chris Ridge, this year facilitates the backbone, and something I'm extremely proud of, of our district, of a wellness committee that some of you in this, in this room are a part of, with over 50 agencies that are there to support our youth in our community. So, you have to have frontline people that are dedicated to the follow-up associated with working and supporting without-risk youth, but definitely along the same lines as our panel members, it takes a village to, to work on this issue. And definitely, I'd like to give kudos to the entire community of Oxnard that has over 50 agencies that have stepped up to work with our school district. And I'd like to think that anything that this city is confronting with youth, we have 60 people in this room that we can have a head start on tackling anything.
Thank you, Dr. Morales. Next, we have Anthony Martinez.
Thank you. I think that one of the things on the same lines of Reverend Mojorco was saying is getting the information out. A couple of components that I've been honored and privileged to work with the City of Impact... A couple of components that I've been honored and privileged to work with the city impact is, when I first started there about seven years ago, first five years we were doing what is called street impact. And, and what I learned is, the important thing is getting the information out there to these young people. What is available to them? What can they get involved with? What, who is reaching out? Who can take them to where they need help with jobs, help in school, they got probation going on, family issues, counseling, the whole 10 yards. I mean, when we first started going out there, it, it was kind of strange at first, a lot of the, the young people, and, and you know, here I am, I'm a little older than most. So, when I'm going out there, it, it was a little hard, it was this old guy wanted to come talk to me for, you know, and, and people, and, and I kind of felt like Moses at the beginning, parting the Red Sea when we're walking through the streets. But, you know what, it, I, I got so surprised after a while, when they started knowing who you were and what you were doing, how open a lot of these young people in this city are. I mean, you know, what are you doing? Where can I get a job? What, what's available to me? And at that time, when we first started, it was Boys and Girls Club, the YEP program, Youth Empowerment Program, a, a lot of different things. It's getting them the information, they want it. And, and for most young people, because they're involved with whatever the issues are, probation, they got things going on in the hood, they got things going on in the neighborhood, I mean, they're not really going out searching like you'd hope they would, they're, they're battered by a lot of other things, a lot of other barriers. But if you could take it to them, show them, give them a phone number, give them a, who to call, who to talk to, who can, those are things that I, I saw that really made a difference for a lot of our young people. And, and I, I think it's just getting the information to them, whether it be in schools, and we saw, when we got involved with the schools, we're going into the neighborhoods, we're going in, meeting with probation officers, meeting with officers and finding out what was happening in the neighborhoods in certain areas of the city, hotspots in the city, we called, and, and it's just getting out there and getting the information. So, I think that's a big component that we need to understand as we're reaching the youth. Also now, we do what I do now, it's called case management, now we're able to work with the individuals, where, whether it be the mandates of court and probation, starting to get them to the right places, helping with jobs.
Fifteen seconds.
One of the greatest youth employment opportunity program, it's just getting the information of, of the resources that are available to them, so.
What is the best way to approach at-risk population, our youth, our teens? What can and should be done to deter gang involvement or delinquent behavior?
I think just contacting the youth as much as we can with positive contacts as far as the police department is concerned. And just reassuring them that, you know, there's different choices that they can make for their future. I, I think one of the issues is, they're not getting the attention, the attention that they deserve and that they need while growing up, so they're looking outward for, you know, different people to fill that role. And they're, they're being caught up with drugs and, you know, other people that they might see as having fun, but they're losing touch with the growing process. So, you know, being a, a role model or positive influence in their life and just giving them as much positivity with contacts that we have and we can provide will be beneficial for them. And it's going to take, it's going to take a team effort, you know, it's, it's not just going to be the police, it's, you know, it's the teachers and, you know, different counsel that they can get to hopefully provide them with better opportunities.
Thank you Officer Curtis.
Well, that's a loaded question, because, I mean, there are a lot of components to it. What am I talking about? You know, we talk about living wages for families, that's critical, because it starts really in the home in terms of having the resources, individuals having the resources to be able to sustain families. And so, I think it's very important that we look at jobs for families, jobs for our students. And giving this type of positive activity to students helps to deter them from certain gang activities or involving themselves in, in situations. So, definitely there's a big economic component to this. Abraham Maslow talked about the importance of just food, shelter and clothing, having the very basics in life. So, in terms of the resources, I think we have to start at the very basic resources for our individuals so that our communities can grow, so that our communities can bond and so that we can build what we call social capital.
Thank you.
Something was said earlier, Dr. Morales said, and I wrote it down, know their realities. And I think it's really important, the, the system, and I've been doing this for a very long time, in the system we've become a lot smarter. We understand what the risk factors are, we can identify those risk factors very, very early. If you look at any research, particularly research that's put on by first five, they'll tell you that you can identify high-risk factors leading to delinquency in foster care is early zero to five. So, we need to shift our focus, we can identify the risk factors early, it's a lot cheaper to deal with them early. So, in terms of resources, I think from a probation standpoint, unless we're mandated by the state or the county to do a particular function, I think all the resources should really go to the entities where the people will go and that they trust. When a youth or family are in crisis, there's three places they trust, they trust their churches, they trust their community organizations and they trust their schools. And I think if we embed more resources in those three entities, I think what we're going to see is, we're going to see people who are trained that can identify at-risk behaviors early in the process, can deliver needed resources in a timely manner, and it is going to, it's going to make an impact on that kid going into the foster care system or the delinquency court system. So, in terms of resources and tools, I'm all in favor of giving those resources to the places where people trust.
So, I'm not going to talk about the suppression or the enforcement part of it, because we're actually very good at that. Unfortunately, we're forced to be very good at that and that, that comes after the fact. More stuff needs to do, needs to be done beforehand. Just build on a couple of things that, that Mark said, and I think I'll give an example is, nobody wants to be a gang member, nobody grows up saying, I want to be a gang member. Very few fathers or mothers think when their, when their kids are, you know, this big, oh, I want him to be a gang member. Reality is, is, you know, 95% of the kids that are in juvenile hall and the adults that are in jail or prison stepped into the batter's box with two strikes against them, that's, that's the reality. What happens is, we have all these, these support systems, starting with the family, the community, the schools, the, the people that are not successful, the, the, the kids that, that join the gangs, that are in the batter's box with two strikes when they, when they step in, those support systems didn't work for them. So, they fell through the cracks. The reality is, is there's not, when you have a, a student, a young person fall through the cracks, you don't have the schools out in the community, you don't have very many other, other entities out in the community that can help that person, help guide that person. The reality is, oftentimes it's, it's the police, we're the ones out in the community making contacts with these kids. And if all you do is approach it from the enforcement side of it, you know, when people call the police, what do they expect?
Fifteen seconds.
Like I said, somebody's going to jail. So, the tools we need, we need access to the kids, we can make referrals, we, we, we make referrals, we have a great program, and I promise, when I have more than two minutes, I'll get to it, in juvenile hall. Dr. Morales talked about the, the counselor in every school, I believe we're probably the only city that I know of that has a, a counselor in every school in the elementary district, and then the police officers, we make referrals, we go to a call of a domestic violence incident and there's kids in the home, we make a referral to that school for that child to get counseling, because we know, because everybody on here will agree, it's, violence is learned in the home, it starts early, we make referrals, so, these are elementary school kids, so that, that's, that's one tool.
Thank you Chief. I'll deduct 20 seconds for your next question. I'm kidding. Ms. Hardy?
You're going to talk faster.
So, I would like to see more resources dedicated to a unified approach in dealing with juvenile delinquency issues. And what I mean by that is, in, in my opinion, it's important to deal with the entire well-being of the child and the entire well-being of the family. You know, sometimes there's the approach where you provide just the programming service, but you don't look at some of those other issues, those underlying issues. And for me, one of the things that is important is like dealing with mental health issues, you know, depression is real, anxiety is real, and sometimes there's this stigma that comes with talking about some of these issues that our kids and our families are facing and they don't have anyone to talk to about it. And so, that just compounds the issue in terms of looking for a place of belonging or, or how one may fit or deal with the circumstances in which they're in. I also think that mentoring is a highly effective and important approach in working with youth. And I certainly would like to see more resources go towards providing youth with positive role models. You know, sometimes mom and dad are, they're working multiple jobs, they're not able to be around and youth need guidance, they need support, and they're in school from morning to, you know, 3:00 PM and then maybe an after-school program from 3:00 to 6:00, but what's happening after that? And so, if we can put more resources into mentoring, I think that would go a long way as well.
Thank you Ms. Hardy. Reverend Ojorco.
Yes, I definitely agree with most of the panel, of course, all the panel and with Dr. Morales, what he said, you got to get to know your students. And, and one thing we have to understand is that every single kid in our communities are at risk, every single kid. There is, of course, different levels of risk, there's higher risk and so forth and already involved. But I'm telling you, 35 years of experience, I will tell you right now that the greatest strategy we've ever used, obviously through mentoring, is we use what I call my recycle homies. We get people that are former offenders, have been involved in that lifestyle, we turn them around, that doesn't mean that we haven't used other people and not been involved in gangs. One of the most effective people that I've ever seen in my life was my own daughter Cece with, with the homie Javi, it was so funny to watch them walk together going into the schools, he's all tat, head to toe, and she doesn't add nothing, marking on her body and going and talking to these kids who are effective, they, they are, reaching the kids with their own language, knowing the kids with their own way. Because you need to understand that they will look at all of us as squares. And you can be loving and hug them and care about them, but the end result is who's going to make the impact? Now, that doesn't mean that people who are squares can make an impact on one of these kids. But I'm telling you right now, the most effective strategy is using peer counseling, former offenders who've been trained, that they have a proven track record, that they've turned their life around, and of course don't have, not 290, you know, sex offenders and so forth, that they can reach our youth in, in a proper setting. So, I think that's probably the most effective way to be able to reach our youth and engage them and, of course, and deter them from gangs, because they have an advantage, the people who've never been involved in gangs will say, hey, this is not how you want to be. And the people involved in gangs say, hey, it's not the romance, romantic type of thing or it's not as great as you think it might be.
Thank you Reverend. Dr. Morales.
I'm going to take a different approach, because we often perseverate ourselves on the amount of tools or the amount of resources at the problem, but we also first have to understand what everyone's role is. We take a 24-hour day, divide it up into thirds, a third of it you're supposed to be asleep. So, most youth, at-risk youth might get six, five, six hours of, of, of sleep. But now, we're really dealing with the, the eight hours, six to eight hours that they're in school, we got that, okay? So, now we're dealing with the rest, the other eight hours. What is there in the community? My staff can connect people to resources, community programs if they exist. But I've already told you, we're, we've committed over $3 million ongoing to identify what our students are needing and connecting with them, connecting with their families, now we got to be able to have services to be able to connect them too. Now, I'd love for our youth to either be connected with a church, connected with a service organization, connected with a different type of program, but they do need connection. And along the same lines of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, of security, nurturing, love, connectedness, safety, we're in a community where I serve, 89% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. So, we have many households where both parents are working and we have some situations where they are being cared for by family members or neighbors, that's how it is. So, I am not going to say, well, if I had more contact with parents and if they were home, then we would have a situation that is okay. We have to embrace our reality and step up. What is everyone in the community going to do in order to help our youth make it? Because they have a lot of temptation and they have a lot of places that they can go to, guess what? They can feel, fill their needs of connectedness and love. I just hope it's someone in this room.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Can I get an amen?
Mr. Martinez.
Amen, amen.
I took Reverend's line.
One of the things that I've learned as a case manager, again, it's always like that we've always been saying about the resources and connection and all those things, the mentoring. But the one word that always has become profound in my head is, is consistency. It has to be consistent, has to be constantly available. If you, because I've learned by my own experience, you make a promise, you don't come through, you blew it, it's done, it's done, and, and it'll take an arm and a leg to even get another chance. We're talking about high-risk youth who have been defeated in many areas of their life and, and you're promising this great hope and then you don't come through, it's consistency. The programs are constantly changing and that's, what's working here and all of a sudden it's gone because of funding or they don't have that availability no more, and you, you're constantly searching and you're going through that computer and you're making the phone calls, oh, we don't do that. It, it's got to be some way of finding consistency. And the only true consistency, if it can't be programmed, is the individual, is the person that can go to somebody and always be there for them, whether they got anything in their hand or not. If all they got is just a hand to hand them, well, that ought to work too. So, it is consistency and, and, and hoping that by just being there, you win a lot, you did. One of the greatest compliments I ever had was a young lady I worked with who said, you're the only one that comes and visits me when I'm in jail. All I thought I was just going over there to find out, what are you going to do when you get out, you know, let's make a plan, let's, let's find out what's going to happen, you know, do you want to get a job? Consistency.
Fifteen seconds.
And if you, you find that in yourself to be able to be there, put yourself out there and, and make yourself available.
From your perspective, what systemic issues exist currently as barriers to the success for the identified population?
Well, I, I think one of the things that's already been touched on before is that a lot of these kids are growing up in, in single-parent homes, or homes where when they come home from school, mom or dad isn't there because they're out working, you know, they might be on their third job by this time, you know, the second, third shift. So, they're forced to grow up quickly, very quickly, too quickly. And on top of that, after school, they might have to pick up little brother and sister and take care of them, so they're, they're forced to grow up too fast, so they don't get a chance to live their youth. So, by the time mom or dad finally does get home, you know, they're going out and getting into trouble because they never had a chance to, to do what they wanted to do. And, you know, like I said, living in Southern California, somebody has to pay the bills so that, you know, that might, that might take you working two, three, four different jobs. It's not that you're neglecting your children, but you still have to, to pay for food, put a roof over their head, get clothes. So, I, I think that's probably one of the toughest situations for these families and these kids that are, that are being forced to, to grow up in a situation like that, where they, they can't really get in front or get ahead because they're just always trying to catch up.
Thank you Officer Curtis. Dr. Timmons.
And I'd like to just ditto that, the research says that for every 10 minutes of commuting, we lose 10% of time with our families. And that's significant. We find that many of our families, that's been stated, have to work, both parents have to work, or you work two and three jobs and you're just not available. And so, activities for our youth after school is important, having a place to go. What tends to happen in a What tends to happen in a culture is if you can find a place of belonging, and this is what happens with our youth, they may find a place of belonging, but that place of belonging may be inappropriate, and it may be gang-related or violence-related activity in that place of belonging. So we, as a community, need to identify what our values are. We need to put forth those values and those goals in our community, and we need to have a place for our youth to kind of land in the afternoons. And I get back to this idea of economic equity. That's critical. It's critical that we have the same playing field in terms of wages, in terms of access, so that we can have resources to live in Southern California.
Thank you, Dr. Timmons. Ms. Varela.
I completely agree with my fellow panelists here. I think growing up in Ventura County now is much tougher than when I was growing up in Ventura County. We didn't have to worry about a lot of the stuff. There wasn't social media. There was, you had to actually work in order to go and talk to your friend who lived down the street. You had to jump on your bike. It was safe for you to drive over there, and things were a lot simpler. Now, things are a lot more complex. And we add the complexity, and then we pull the parents out of the house, and we allow these, think that these kids are going to find structure and acceptance from wherever they're gonna find it. We know where they're gonna find it. They're gonna find it on the street corner. They're gonna find it with people who are hanging out on the street, because they're always recruiting to join. So I think we just need to be smart about this, and I think I always loved the idea of developing holistic approaches to the way we deal with individuals. We have a lot of structure in terms of what we can share, in terms of information, confidentiality. I think we really need to look at working with the whole family unit in order to make some improvements in the home. It's so important. You can, a kid can go through a lot of changes, and a lot of programs, and a lot of services, but if they return back to the same environment without any changes in that house, it's just a matter of time, but they're gonna gravitate back to the delinquency side. So I think a holistic approach and breaking down the barriers that forces to work with the individual and open the doors to us working with the family as a whole would be fantastic.
Thank you very much. I will repeat the question. Chief Whitney, from your perspective...
Adam, that's okay. If I could take those 20 seconds, I'll take them.
Go ahead. Take it away.
Barriers to success. First thing I want to say is, when we talk about like this topic, we can kind of talk ourselves into thinking that it's like more violent now than it was yesterday, or when we were growing up. The reality is, it is, Oxnard is a different place than it was when I first started in the early 90s, completely different. Crime is less than half of what it was back then. So I always want to make sure, and I have, I have three kids, my boy's 15. Our kids nowadays are a lot more, a lot more, a lot kinder, a lot more diplomatic, a lot safer than it was when I was growing up. So I just want to say that. Having said that, there are probably the haves and the have-nots. It becomes wider, and there are more have-nots. And it's very hard, raising kids, I have three kids, raising kids, 18 years it takes of raising a kid, where something can go off the rails, right, and something can go wrong. And for boys, it's probably more like 24, because we're a little bit slower. When they're young, you need the nurturing from the parents. If the kids don't have that, unfortunately, they can go off the rails, and it's very hard to come back. They go into school, maybe they have learning disabilities, maybe they're getting bullied, they can go off the rails there. They become older, like my son, 15, boom, now he's hanging out with kids he shouldn't be hanging out with, they can go off the rails there. And, no, my time's running short, so I'll just say, the safety, wherever we can identify areas to improve that safety system. There was a, there was a boy within my sphere of influence that did something wrong over the weekend. I, as an adult, to take the initiative, I call his dad, explain to him what happened. It's not a law enforcement thing, it's just looking after each other. Several people up here have mentioned that. So zero to 18, trying to raise our kids right at 18, if we've done everything right, there's a good chance. But there's too many things on the way to 18 that can go wrong. So we have to look at every one of those and see where we can help beef it up, see where they're coming off the rail, and help get them back on, or make sure they don't come off.
Thank you, Chief.
So the panel has already touched upon a lot of the issues in which I certainly agree with. And to me, the systemic issues that prevent us from realizing, or these families and youth from realizing success would just be the generational cycle of poverty, substance abuse, mental health issues that I talked about before, generational gangs, and families finding a way to break that cycle. And when it's, when your environment is something, that's just what you know, it's hard to break that cycle. Now, what Scott has talked about, crime rates being different, Mark touched upon some of the stats and where we're seeing significant success. I just think it's incumbent upon all of us here on this panel and the individuals in this room that we continue to work towards these solutions for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Reverend Ojorco.
Yes, my colleague Martinez did touch on the issue regarding consistency in funding. And one of the things that has to stop is that we only depend on funding to be able to carry out the task, because he's right. Then we forget, we don't do it. That's why we need to mobilize volunteers also and be able to use the untapped resources. But one of the things I've seen in all these years of doing intervention and prevention is that the idle time, the gap, that he said, hey, he has them for a few hours, then they're on my streets, for example, or the panel streets, and now we have to deal with it. There's too much of an idle time because the parents are working and so forth, nobody's taking care of them. They relate to each other, they talk to each other, next thing you know, they have something in common. You must also understand, when you approach a culture, the generation of our kids is not the same culture as ours, especially the Hispanic culture. We approach, oh, these Mexican kids are shooting each other. Well, these Mexican kids like football and hot dogs. These Mexican parents like football and novellas, and they like other types of food. And even though they can eat the same food sometimes, they don't speak the same language culturally. So we need to have the proper approach when we're reaching them. And obviously, economics is a serious issue, so we need to find opportunities. I think that one thing that has to come back, and CityCorps does a great job, and PAL does a great job, Boys and Girls Club also, but we need to start figuring strategies to bring those old summer jobs like I used to have to stay out of trouble and keep the kids out of trouble, so they don't have to steal to buy something. They can earn a nice, fair living wage to be able to accomplish their goals and their dreams.
Thank you, Reverend. Dr. Morales.
I see one of the biggest obstacles in society, whether it's in Oxnard or looking at it from a 30,000-foot level in California, is bias. We assume that our at-risk youth or our folks that are in gangs don't have a shot at being good. There's goodness in everyone. We just gotta be patient, and we gotta find it. You know, it's a struggle when students smell or realize that we've given up on them. They're not gonna try anymore. They're gonna get under our skin, whether it's in the schools or in society. But we also have to look at whatever resources we have, whether as a district, as a city, as a state, what are we doing with them? We live in a state that, over the last 30 years, has built more jails than they have universities. What are we saying to the system? What are we saying to our youth? You know, whether it's parents talking to me about, we need to suspend and expel more kids that are doing X, or if they're going to Chief Whitney and saying, we need to incarcerate more youth and get them out of society so we don't have to deal with them, maybe we should be asking, what programs exist where we can connect with our youth more deeply? Because repressing them and shoving them aside has not worked, and it's only produced more jails and not universities. So let's all get together, whether it's at the city or the schools, and support programs that connect with kids. Yes, let's hear about the issues. Yes, let's deal with the extreme and severe issues, but let's not make them the microcosm of what every problem that society has or the school districts. We can't give up on our youth, and we need to look at it from a totally different lens.
Doctor Morales. Ms. Martinez.
I agree with everybody in that sense, where, for me, I've seen that the incentives that we give our young people have a lot to do with whether they're even gonna try or not. Giving them options, this is what you're gonna get if you do this or do that. Simple things like doing a career awareness program. And a young man that says, you know what, my mom can't even buy me a pair of shoes. Hey, well, you know what? We got a career awareness program. You get that done, get $50, bro. All right, do that right away, you know? And there he is. He's at the office, he's doing his resume. You take him to go spend that $50, $50 to go get his shoes, you win. Now he's thinking, okay, he's got a different frame of mind now. He's thinking, okay, I could do this, things are happening. The things like, even if we can work on scholarships, more scholarships in our cities, and almost CET offers a great scholarship for anybody who's worked in immigrant farm working or anything like that. There's a lot of things that we can get involved with and letting these young people know that these things are available, those incentives that make the changes for them, that they see a reward right away. You could tell him, yeah, go to four years of college, and you get that degree, he can't even see past next year. You know, he's still trying to get through his senior year. He's a super, super senior. What are you gonna do? You're gonna talk to him about four more years? He's looking at you like you're crazy. You know, but it's getting those incentives right away. If we can get to them quickly and get them their answers as fast as we can, I think it would really help.
From your experience, whether through office work or field work, and your expertise with the identified population, are the youth or parents of this population aware of the dangers or consequences of youth delinquency or gang participation, and how it can impact their future and even their entire community? And if so, what can be done to raise awareness with this population?
Well, I believe they are aware for the most part, but, you know, I see a lot of times, you know, with kids that are in gangs, it's a learned behavior from family who's been in gangs, or close friends, or relatives of friends who are in gangs in a situation like that. So, I mean, I believe for the most part, the parents are aware of the situation. And but that's tough to break through to them, that they need to maybe step up their participation in the kid's life if they can. Can you repeat the second part of the question for me, please?
What can be done to raise awareness with this population?
I think it's been touched on before, and I think working together as a community is probably the biggest, the biggest thing that we can do. Like I said before, you used to be able to go and talk to your neighbor for a cup of sugar, or, you know, some food, or to wash my kid, and I don't think it's like that anymore. I know when I was a kid, growing up, if my parents were at work and I got out of line and the neighbor saw me, by the time my parents got home, they knew about it already, you know, and I was in trouble. I believe now, you know, the community kind of turns their head the other way. We need to work together. It's gonna take a village to raise these kids, and hopefully, we can come together to try to turn these kids around that, you know, are borderline, they're kind of right on the cusp of what they want to do with their lives, and we can pull them back, but it's gonna take everybody working together.
Thank you, Officer Curtis. Dr. Timmons.
I'd like you to do a quick exercise. If you'll turn to the person next to you and just give them a fist bump, real quick. Now, from my vantage point, that did something to everyone in this room. It sparked something. And when we talk about coming together in villages, villagers can't come together unless there's relationship. Do parents know? Probably. But can they stop long enough from working and doing the activities of daily living to tend to this thing? Sometimes not. So it's gonna take us, it's going to take the village, it's going to take extra sacrifice from those of us who are available, to assist and to build relationships, to not be afraid to reach out to individuals. And I know that it's kind of simple and elementary, but that's what it's about. It's about having compassion, and it's about creating a place of belonging, and it's about letting the community know that we're going to work together. And identifying objectives, that's going to be very important. Identifying what the community needs, because every community, you know, may not need the same thing, but coming to common objectives and rallying around those objectives is very important. So in terms of our families, parents aware, they may be aware. The other thing that I'd like to mention is early education, the importance of early education for our youth. Early education as well as activities, girls and boys clubs, mentoring opportunities, whatever that takes, so that it can serve as a diversion into positive experiences.
Thank you, Dr. Timmons. Ms. Varela.
I'm gonna expand on that a little bit. I think for the most part, families are aware. I think at times when your child is really struggling, you feel this sense of helplessness. And I think as a community, as those of us who provide services, need to make sure that there's awareness to what is available in the community, and I think we need to provide a little bit of encouragement. Everybody needs a little bit of hand-holding in order to get to where they need to go. We need to put that train on the tracks and move it in the direction that it's supposed to go. The reality is, Oxnard, and having grown up in Oxnard and spent a lot of time working in Oxnard, there is a wealth of services and resources and caring people in this community. Those natural supports that have existed forever, Boys and Girls Club, libraries, museums, Little League, Parks and Rag, Police Activities League, I mean, you go on and on of those services that are in your community, in our communities, that have existed forever. And they will continue to exist, even though grant funding and organizations may come and go, those natural supports in the community are where we need to guide our families to, because all we need is that hook. Once we get that hook, once we get a young person interested in something that is positive, it's pro-social, and it takes them off the streets, I think that's a great step in the right direction. So those of us really need to, as a community, continue to encourage and continue to hand-hold and put that train back on the right track.
Thank you very much, Ms. Varela. Scott Whitney.
Yeah. I think as a community, we generally tend to discount the risks, and we misapply them. When our kids are super young, and they're in car seats, everybody's super careful. We talk about stranger danger and all that stuff, and the reality is, is that most violent crime does not come from strangers. Young people and elderly people are not victims of violent crime. So we misinterpret where the dangers are. You have certain populations that are virtually no risk of being victim of a violent crime. That's our elderly population, very, very rare. Stranger danger, as far as somebody that you don't know assaulting you on a violent crime, very, very rare. And when I say don't know, it's, that includes like another gang that you know who that gang is. So incidences where you have a victim and suspect, where they don't, there's not some connection between the two of them, is very, very rare. The people that discounted the most, the highest chance of being a victim of a violent crime, young men of color, between the ages of 19 and 24. They're the ones that discounted the most. And those of us that are older than 24, and male, we, you know, we've been there, done that. We've done a lot of things where we discounted the chances of things going wrong. That's, that happens. For females, we know, and we're not talking, we're mostly talking about gangs, but for females, the chance of being a victim of a violent crime, it's somebody that is very close to you, somebody that knows you. It's the same with gang violence. So I think that we discount it. Ways, how can we improve in that area? Well, let's talk about it, talk about the facts, whether it's, and I know we're not talking about domestic violence...
Fifty seconds.
...it's domestic violence, whether it's kids. I have my kids, my nephews, my friends' kids that are... kids, I have my, my kids, my nephews, my friends' kids that are that age, especially if they're, they're young men of color, you have to be aware of it. You look at every, every one of our, our homicides, not everyone, nearly every one of our homicides follows a similar pattern. So we discount the risks, I believe.
Thank you, Chief Whitney, Ms. Hardy.
I would agree with the panel in that most people are generally aware, but we could always do a better job of increasing awareness. And I think that's done through collaborative partnerships. We all have to be aware of the services and programs that are being offered by our different agencies and organizations. The other thing that I, I believe too is important is eliminating or reducing the shame that comes with asking for help. And sometimes there is that awareness, but people are afraid to ask for help, they may be ashamed of their circumstances, and I think we do that by building trusting relationships with the people that we serve so that they are willing to work with us so that we can help them find solutions or resources that they need for the issues that they're dealing with.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. For the next three panelists, I will ask a different question, just to get a little bit more value, and this will conclude our panel discussion for tonight. Will this recommitment on today's at-risk youth have a lasting effect on crime organ activity in our community over the next decade? And how could the effectiveness be measured?
Well, obviously, positive community involvement will always have a great impact, and it's been proven before. It can be measured, of course, by how many youth you're impacting, how many lives are changing, how many people are within a year or so prospering and taking advantage of the tools that are out there, how many new kids are getting involved in City Core, getting involved in PAL, Boys and Girls Club, or taking advantage of all the mentoring and strategies. But it can also be measured on the amount of volunteers you recruit to mobilize those resources and how many people you can mobilize. And again, I go back to the example, up in King City and so forth, we had a mob war up there, and we did like ten peace marches, but I also mobilized 2,000 volunteers to be able to reduce crime. So it has to, we can measure it based on not just services provided, but how many kids and youth are taking advantage of those services and how many lives were able to turn around for the better. And that also comes through long-term mentoring. So let's say we start today, we're all encouraged today, well, we can take ten, twelve kids and help them flip their life totally around on the right track, and hopefully a large percentage of those will stay constant on that path.
Thank you, Reverend. Dr. Morales.
Our youth and our community needs a lot. What we have to do is not be overwhelmed by how much we need to get ahead in life and to get, get through school and to stay out of trouble. The connections that we can make tonight will have a longstanding effect, whether it's making a, a follow-up meeting with Reverend Mohorko about connecting with the, the coalition of church leaders in this community, whether it's having a follow-up meeting with probation or with the police department. I know I've, I've benefited a lot as our, as our, our district from a very strong relationship with our police department on building meaningful connections with students. And you would think that we'd be talking about other things and about locking people up, no, but our conversations are like, how can we create meaningful opportunities where either our teachers, our staff, and the entire police department can be visible and make great connections with our youth who need us the most? And let's follow up. I have a director of people's services who meets every week with a sergeant that's in charge of our school resource officers and case manages our high-profile students that need us. And then we connect them with social work, counselors, mental health, or even medical services. Why? Because it matters. And we can sit here and say, oh my God, how many more youth do we have to, to help in order to, to get, to get through this? No, but we celebrate the ten, twenty, or, or, or thirty students that we were able to help that week. And all of us need to have that attitude, because everyone in this room, working together, making connections, whether you're running an initiative or joining a community agency or your church, or volunteering at a school, just do your part. We need you. We need your help. And I'm very excited to see sixty people in this room that are committed to this work, because I know all of us up here invested our time this evening because our youth matter. And we reflect the same attitude and perception that a couple of years ago, when we had that community meeting in this room, and we saw all the dots there to reinforce programs for our youth and our seniors. We are not at a misalignment, we just got to get together and, and make it happen.
Dr. Morales, last panelist for the evening, Mr. Martinez.
I, I keep going back to that word, consistency. The continuity of, of all that we're doing, one of the things as, as I was working, in street impact, I recognized was the left hand never knew what the right hand was doing and vice versa. They, they, you know, I got this program, you got that program. I don't want to throw anybody on the bus here, I'll throw myself on the bus. I, I was at a group meeting one time where there was a bunch of, the whole room was filled with all kinds of different resources. And a lot of people didn't know what the other one was doing. And I was sitting there with one of our supervisors, I said, look at, we got the availability for us to go out and we're out in the streets giving everybody information, because we've referred to anything and everything we could find, but nobody ever called us and told us, hey, we got this going on, can you let them know? The left hand never knew what the right hand was doing, and it almost became a competition of which resources was going to get the numbers. And it just became a, 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 a losing battle, I thought, personally. That's my own personal feeling, that's my own personal thought. But it's just what I observed. If we can all unite together, like the doctor was speaking, that, you know, if you can make yourself available, be constant in that availability and then constantly put yourself out there, it will make a difference. It will make a difference. That same kid that I would give a card to, eight times he threw that card right back to me. It was the tenth time and so on, or even one day he walks up to me, and I know I've told him this a hundred times, but he said, hey, bro, really, can you get me a job?
Fifty seconds.
I know, like, well, you can go get one, I've told you, you know, or even say, I'm giving you another card, go, how many have I given you? Twelve. Well, here's thirteen. You know, it, it's that, just being, that continuity that, that, that really convinces them that you're there for, for the long run.
Thank you very much. That concludes our questions for the evening. I want to thank Mark Varela this evening, Dr. Angela Timmons, Reverend Edgar Mohorko, Edgar Hardy, Anthony Martinez, Dr. Cecil Morales, Chief Scott Whitney, and also Officer Nick Curtis. So thank you for this panel discussion. If anybody has any questions, we have thirty minutes allotted for this section here. I will remind you, out of a matter of approach, out of a matter of approach, we can maintain a professional, respectful, and courteous to the panelists. This is not a debate, this is not a time for argument. As you were here, once again, I'll echo what our fellow colleague said, it's a sense of unity to bring resolution. Please ask questions that are relevant to the topic and the theme that was discussed tonight. Any question that is not relevant to what we're discussing, the theme, we will not be able to acknowledge it, unfortunately. It has to be with this team. So you have one minute for your question, and you can address it to anybody in the panel.
Thank you. First, I, I have great respect for your expertise and your efforts on behalf of our youth. My question is really, in this age of constraints, how do we find the funding? I served on a review panel for the city of Oxnard to determine how to distribute the, the HUD funds for unmet needs and underserved, low-income communities. And of course, everybody had great and much-needed requests, but my concern is that, you know, we have, we had the fire department come in and they wanted a couple of vehicles, and they gave a great, a great presentation, and I supported them and lighted the Thomas Fire. But that request, you know, took close to $300,000 out of this limited pot of money that might have been better spent on, say, after-school programs. And Chief, you don't have to answer this question, but if, if any of you other folks would, would care to maybe weigh in on, on, on how we might, you know, find ways to fund some of these much-needed initiatives. Thank you.
Adam, so, Steve, I'm the, like, the one guy you didn't want to ask to answer this question, but...
Well, I, I didn't, I don't want to put you on the hot seat.
Well, I appreciate that. I'll, I'll try to give it a shot. So my perspective is, the departments, we should not be competing for a pie that's not big enough. We need to make the pie bigger. I was just looking at our budget, my interim city manager job. Last year, Oxnard's general fund budget was 125 million. City of Ventura, half our size, general fund budget, 115 million. They have a bigger pie. Our pie is, is not big enough. So we have to look, and it, Oxnard's a working-class community, it is what it is. So as leaders, we have to figure out, how can we make that pie bigger? That's, that's the answer. The reality is, you can't talk about, well, we shouldn't buy a fire truck, we should spend that money on something else. We should not be in those types of arguments, because that, that's not, it's not healthy for the community. So, short answer, we need to make the pie bigger.
I can be very, very super brief, and one of the things is example of what Dr. Morales was saying, we have to leverage resources. We have to not just depend on funding and grants, because they go away and then there's no consistency, like Brother Martinez said. So one thing I, I've been doing, gang intervention, youth outreach, most of the time volunteer. And, and so even if the funding's out, we still operate. Now, trust me, I need funding, so throw some this way if you can. But, but, you know, but the reality is, you have to leverage resources, you have to mobilize untapped resources, you have to mobilize the people in the community if you want to get it done. Then, when something is being done, then you can find some of the funding, and it usually does come once something is being done. Thank you.
Adam, can I, can I add to that very quickly? So what Reverend Mohorko said, leveraging resources, and I, I wanted to answer, put this part of my answer earlier. We have a program in the police department with probation. They have, probation has programming throughout the entire day. It's not easy to get into the juvenile facility. For the most part, you have to have committed a felony. They have about seventy-seven kids in there is, is the average. Our officers, and this is leveraging resources, we don't have to own the program ourselves. Our officers can go to the, the probation facility, the juvenile facility, have positive interaction with seventy-seven kids, one hour, twice, twice a month, so two hours in a month, doesn't take a lot of resources, because studies will show over and over and over again, particularly the young people, if they think the rules are fair, they think that they have a chance, they're more likely to follow the rules. If they think that those enforcing the rules, the police officers, treat them fairly, they're more likely to follow the rules. So that's just one example of leveraging the resources, and I wanted to get that in earlier. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ola Washington. I'm a professor of history at Ventura College, where I teach African-American history in race relations classes. And I taught the race relations classes to the city of Oxnard, County of Ventura, and so many people many years ago. And I would like to say, I've written some things, I'm going to not cover all of them, but I want to commend you for what you're doing and say that you're doing a great job. I want to also encourage you to get what you have done here out to the community. That's one of the things that we can do to help achieve the goals, to help the youth. And secondly, I'd like to tell everyone that you can send your troubled students to Ventura College at the age of sixteen, if they have a letter from the counselor. And that was a program that saved my own grandson, so I'd like to share that with you. Now, Dr. Kenneth Turner was the head of the Department of Education, and I was trying to do the same things you're trying to do thirty years ago. And Dr. Turner met with us at the University of California, and he said, above all else, above everything else, students must be loved. They must be loved by their teachers and their mentors and all of the people that they're in contact with. You want to help them, help them to feel loved, and then they have to have positive self-identity. They have to know who they are and have to learn to respect themselves and their culture. And so therefore, I want to ask the question, what role do you think ethnic studies might play in helping our youth? Any of you? Jump right in.
I, I think there, in order to create a, a great educational program, we need to look at the students that we serve and the community that we in as a, a community full of assets. And the only way you do that is by celebrating where everybody comes from and everyone's reality. There's definitely a new culture that we are all a part of in the present-day Oxnard, but there's a richness here, variety from, of how we got here in that journey, but then also behind people's ethnic richness, whether it's being African-American, being Latino. Don't classify all Latinos in one place, because we have first generation, second generation, third generation. We have people that were voluntary immigrants, some that came with an involuntary immigrant history, and then we have a, a richness of a lot of long-term families that have owned a lot of farmland, some currently producing it and working it, and some subleasing it out. Even the culture of the growing industry has evolved over the last thirty years here in Oxnard, and we need to understand it and celebrate it. And definitely, ethnic studies is an opportunity for people to celebrate and understand maybe some of their own past of their ancestors, but look at, at others, understanding that there's an asset there with all diverse populations that we encounter in this country. We are a country of immigrants, and all of the immigrant stories that make up this nation should be celebrated.
This is something different that hasn't been brought up tonight, but it just occurred to me at the end. I went through a career testing program through UCLA Extension when I was in my thirties and found out exactly where I should have gone in my life, work-wise. I can see a career testing program for kids by the time they're nine or 10 years old. What parents should be looking for is those talents, that what the kid gets the best grades in, in school. If they're not getting any good grades, then they need to find where is the, where are the talents that that kid is good in? Because if you start working towards that by the time you're in high school, starting in high school, and you start working towards whatever that goal is of where your interests are in comparison to your abilities and your talents, then you end up graduating from high school knowing exactly what you want to do with your life. And during your time in high school, you're going to be far more interested in focusing on your particular interests rather than going out and getting into trouble. Just a suggestion, I don't know how it could be used, but I got tired, when I was growing up, I got tired of people coming up to me when they'd, they'd say to me, now, what is it that you want to do with your life after you get out of school? I said, I want to go into fashion design. Well, I grew up on a farm twenty miles from town. I have thirty students in my high school graduating class and ten of them in my eighth-grade graduating class. So ten of them, I went through, all through, all the grades with them. And, but what these people would do is they would pat me on the back or on the shoulder, and they'd say, well, now that's nice. Now, what do you really want to do with your life? And I got that constantly, constantly. I had to force my folks into allowing me to go a long way away all by myself after one year of college and go to a special school so that I could, I could get involved in that talent, which I did. Find what they're best at, what they like the most, and focus on that. And I think you'll have a lot happier kids. I didn't get, I didn't get pregnant because the birth control pill came out. So I never had any children, I don't have any grandchildren. So I'm just saying, and I'm in my seventies, I'm going to be seventy-seven in a few weeks. I'm extremely healthy, have all my teeth, have no, no, even no fillings in my mouth. I get my teeth cleaned every, every six months and the dentist is very disappointed. Now, I'm probably going to live to be a hundred, but at least I got the opportunity because I forced the issue. But that isn't what's happening with most of the kids, obviously. They're going out and getting into trouble instead. Thank you.
My name is Angela Wakecombe. I'm one of your Parks and Recreation Commissioners. And as Parks and Recreation Commissioner, Commission, we are always looking for activities for the kids and the adults. We have a, a park- We have a, a park mantra that says, "Cradle to Grave." We want to, we want to service everybody and families and community gardens and, and we need more of this and that because we have a, we don't have enough green space. You know, we talk about limited resources. Land is always one of them. I would like to ask, we, we got the city council to make a commitment and to say, yes, we need to double the, the amount of students that are accepted into the after-school program because the waiting list is just as big as a program. That was a year ago. The waiting list is still just as big as a program and there's been no answers. You know, you always hear there's, there's a lack of funding for, for the after-school program, it's only a grant, we can only do so much. We keep talking about this volunteer program in Oxnard. Why doesn't the city have a website that, that says, "I want to volunteer and here's a list of where you can volunteer and this is how to sign up?" And if you have to get a, a LifeScan, if you're going to work with children, you have to get a LifeScan, it's there. And this is how it's funded and this is how you can do it. And the police department, guess what? They do LifeScans. They're also expensive, but they do it. We need to have a very simple road for volunteers. And we need to get out with better publicity in this city and say, this is how. And bring it up in lights, have it all over our website, which we don't have. So, we need to get with the times and we need to encourage our volunteers because land is scarce, money is scarce, but people are not. And they are just turned off because nobody's turned them on and shown them how. I want to know what this panel is going to do about that and how they're going to make that change. I could still be a squeaky wheel and I'll do this every year, say the same thing every month, say the same thing, but I'd really like to know, the powers that be, how are you going to make that happen? And if you're doing it already, please let me know.
Actually, most organizations do have a volunteer recruitment process. And for example, like, the school district does have it, but they also recruit through other organizations. We have a, a volunteer recruitment process and we do quite a bit of outreach. The police does also, I know PAL does too, because actually, my daughter won Volunteer of the Year, one, one year. So, each organization does have it. The dilemma is whether people, of course, want to volunteer or not, if they're going out there, looking at the websites that are available. So, each organization does have it. So, it's more of dispersing information, to get information out there for people to be able to take advantage of those opportunities.
We presently LifeScan our own volunteers and, at our expense in the Oxnard School District because we want to get more volunteers at all of our school sites.
How are you doing that with the after-school program? The after-school program is ran by the city. My question wasn't so much for the private organizations. I know that the private organizations, organizations do a wonderful job of getting volunteers. It's our public identity that I want to know, how we're doing on getting volunteers.
I'm going to approach that because I know it's a little tougher, even though I know some of the schools have somebody after-school programs, it's a little tougher when their time is basically done, it falls in the hands of the community. But after-school programs, here's one thing, it's, it's the issue of not using untapped resources. For example, we misconstrue the, the comment of separation of church and state, but there are churches who actually have after-school programs that are run not necessarily by the church theology, they're run by volunteers that care about kids in our community and they do massive recruitment. So, a couple of things that, for example, communities have, activism, activist groups have, or churches, they have people, they have resources. What is the thing that's lacking the most in the community in volunteers? People, buildings, and other resources. That's where, where it's lacking the most. So, there are the opportunities out there, but again, I believe it's dispersing information, also having the people that are active enough to find the facilities that are willing to open their doors and do the inner recruitment. And I, I've seen the, the, and I'll end with this, I've seen the County of Ventura do a lot for the foster, recruit foster parents.
You have 30 seconds for this question.
They go to the churches and so forth and do a lot of outreach.
From the city side, though, the, the police department, we have a Volunteers in Policing VIP program. Takes several months from the time the application because it's a complete background process. City side, there's, there's not as many volunteers from the city side. It, it does take, hate to always say it, but, and I'm not going to make excuses, we could do a better job on the city side, and we should do a better job. But it does take resources, it takes a lot of resources to run a volunteer program. So, I don't know if that give you the short answer.
Can you get volunteers to run your volunteer program?
Yeah. And the, I'll also say, though, it's easy to say, I'm going to volunteer, and the reality is, is a lot of people don't show up. And so, you do a lot of work to get volunteers and then they, they don't show up. I mean, a comment was made, like, why don't we have more people here? You know? If you can't show up to this meeting, you're likely not going to volunteer to do, you know, anything else. So, there's, people are busy, people have busy lives. So, there's, we can make, come up with 101 reasons why, but bottom line is, we should be having more volunteers.
But special kudos to all the volunteers out there and all the sports programs throughout the city. They're angels in this community.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments. The first one's, this is great. It's great that leaders of our community are here expressing their, you know, their thoughts in regards to the issues of the youth. And I have a regret that I, I am a videographer and I have a regret that I didn't bring my camera and record because I could have shared it on social media, Face, Face, Facebook and other YouTube channel. I have a YouTube channel. I could have shared it. But I have the regret, sorry to the Human Relations Commission, but there's three things that resonated with me. One, from Dr. Simmons, is that issue of making friends, being able to make friends. It is difficult for youth to make friends. It's a skill that has to be learned. And that's one of the things that, you know, can be taught, can, can an organization teach. The other one that resonated with me is the consistency. You have to be consistent, you have to always be there, always be there with the, with the youth, with anybody, you know, be consistent. And one last thing is the poverty thing. I grew up in poverty. I grew up in poverty. I grew up, I, I lived in the houses that were built for the braseros. They were made of eight by, by six by one overlapping boards. And I recall an instance when, coming from junior high school and it was raining and we had to walk home. And the, the mom of this other student wanted to give me a ride and I didn't want to give a ri, get the ride, take the ride, because I didn't want them to drive me to my house because above and under lando were the beautiful homes built in the 60s where some of the other students lived. So, they did insist to drive me, but I had them drop me at my uncle's. And I walked home to the house made out of those planks in the rain. Yes, that also has to be addressed. Thank you very much.
I, I overheard everyone's comments, concerns, and, and your heartbeat. One of the things that stood out, Mr. Martinez, was about consistency. And I've had this dream and this idea for a while to start a program with, I'm the youth pastor of Oxnard Revival Center, and start a program called The Flip Program. And it's really to get involved in the life of students from all walks of life that don't have the chance, maybe from their parents or from a positive environment, to get into their life, mentor their life, and help them turn their mess into success. They, they need to see a different perspective other than, you're going to fail, you're, you're going to mess up because of your, your upbringing. I am a product that is someone that has beat statistics. Statistically, I should be in prison. My father did six and a half years in prison and, and statistically, I should have followed some of his footsteps. But because of mentorship in my life, because of people that were consistent in my life, I made a turnaround for the best. And I told myself, until the day I die, I'm going to mentor my students, whoever they are. And so, youth pastoring right now has been a great challenge for me, a great burden for me. I'm going to become a, a father pretty soon. My wife and I are expecting our first child. And I'm already committed, I'm going to be in my child's life 110%. But not every child gets that experience. And I always tell my youth staff, we are sometimes the other parents that they'll never have. And so, I want to start this program with the help of you guys, get your input, your thought on what you think, if this is, would be a success, if this is something that you want to partner with, to get involved in someone's life that doesn't have that opportunity. So, thank you for your time and hopefully can resonate on that.
I tell people, if you have connections with a handful of, of kids, youth, and you want us to somehow show up or partner, you know, do something with them, we'll, we'll be there, so.
And I'd like, just like to say that mentorship doesn't have to be a real formal thing. Mentorship can be just one-on-one with someone that you see walking down the street and you can, you can talk with them, let's say that they're at the bus stop, and you develop a relationship with them and you say something that's positive to them. So, I think that we need to look at mentoring from an informal perspective as well as a formal perspective. And I think that all of us, again, the village, we owe the folks that are in the village a responsibility to share with them what our values are and those positive values.
I think what you're talking about is just addressing what we talked about up here earlier. It's just, it's a, it's a need for people to be around people that care. And I've worked with youth for many years and I've had youth tell me, I, I know who is here for a paycheck and I know who is here because they care. And the people that care about the youth, and it's not an easy job, they will have the, the maximum outcomes in that particular kids. You know, we, we run Juvenile Hall and I can't tell you how many times kids come back and they say, you know what, this is the only place where there are adults that care about me. And how sad is that? So, what you're doing is, is wonderful, it's just demonstrating that the community cares about the kids and, and sometimes that's the, the first step into a successful program.
Good evening, I'm Teresa Robles. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to commend the Oxnard School District for being here, Pastor, for being here. I was born and raised here in Oxnard, in the Colonia area, and I struggled too in life. And the reason I'm here is, I didn't know that this was going to happen tonight, the forum. I heard about it in a Christian network this morning. I really would like more awareness of what is going to happen for our youth in our community. Mr. Morales, I was involved in the Oxnard School District many years ago with Dr. Rick Miller, Deborah Cortez. And I commend the Oxnard School District because right now, my 21-year-old is going to graduate from San Diego State in medicine. My 18-year-old is at San Diego State also. We, we as parents, we as parents and, and of Hispanic children, we need more awareness. And I see it through the schools, like I did volunteering way back then when my kids were at Dreful School. We need more awareness, more transparency. Sometimes the Hispanic communities, the moms and dads are afraid, they don't know what to ask for. And I believe that I was one of them that always asked, what do you have for my child? I didn't want my child to come up to be a delinquent, drug addict, and I did the best from, to my ability. Right now, I'm an attorney at the Superior Court in El Rio for the juvenile system. And it is sad to see children that I know, that I see, that grew up with my kids, that there's no life, there's no focus. So, I, I would like for you, if you can, especially to the ones that are going to be re-elected again for us, for our city, if there could be funding for our kids. I don't want to see the kids be behind the doors. We need more activities. I would like Pastor Mahorco, since you're there, if you could bring awareness to all the churches in the area, Bethel Aime Church, all the churches. Why? Because that's where it starts. And as parents, please, parents, don't be afraid to ask questions. Don't be afraid to ask, what can I do for my child? There is volunteering, there's city corps, there's interface programs for your children. Do what I did. If you're a representative of Oxnard School District, like I was, for ELAC and DLEC, bring that awareness to your school. We, the Oxnard School District, Rio Mesa, they have a DLEC and ELAC, bring that awareness to your school. Enough is enough. We need our children, our Hispanic children, to be in a higher position, not in a lower position. We're a community that should be high and it should be high with our children, meaning in education. And it saddens me that I have to come in the courthouse every morning to see a child that has, that has done something. Okay? Sometimes our children see what their parents do. Just don't send your kids to the school and let the, the school fix it. It be, it begins at the family, with discipline. So, that's all I wanted to say, thank you. Bring openness, awareness, my Dr. Morales, bring it to your ELAC, your DLEC meetings, your school site council meetings. Please do that. Bring awareness to our city, bring back our children.
Thank you very much. And we are, now we're going to ask the last question.
I'm sorry, Deborah Cortez, and I'm a member of this community and also on the school board, but I just wanted to reiterate again, and it's just what my colleague just mentioned as far as family and parents. You know, we really need to work with our, our parents in our, in our schools. And I know, I went to a conference and I'll never forget that the speaker said, you know, parents can be replaced, you know, we need, they need to have somebody, students need to have somebody that's in their corner, that shows that they care about them and they want what's best for them. And I think that's what we do at, in our schools. And there's a lot that has to be done. There's so much accountability that we have in our schools these days in addition to trying to raise the kids of our community. So, we really need adults to step up, the community to step up, and help with that connectedness that our kids need so that they can succeed. And it, you know, kids don't turn at risk just like that. I mean, we see it as they're going through our school system. We have the kids, Dr. Morales, you know, for nine years. And so, we, we've got the biggest impact with our kids in the community, you know, and so we have a huge job. And as far as the city, you know, I, I, I know that, you know, there's a few hours in the evenings when the, really the kids, you know, they're, they're not in bed, they're not in school. You know, if we could provide something, you know, kind of like the Field of Dreams, you know, let's build it and they will come. You know, do something for our kids that, that'll make it something that they'll want to participate in. So, again, thank you, all of you, for, for the, well, the job that you did here tonight, but, and, and please look to us, you know, as, as a resource and working together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And let's give our panelists a round of applause for this evening. We thank you very much. Now, I'll turn it over to Chairwoman Tiffany Lopez for final instructions.
Thank you again. Thank you to our panelists and thank you to all of you who came. This was our first annual Town Hall and Expo. We hope to have this, the Community Relations Commission, every year, and I really wanted to commend Commissioner Quintana coming up with the idea. Thank you so much. And Commissioner Adam Lopez and myself, we did our event committee for this event, but, and again, Luis, thank you so much for all your logistics and planning. We are going to be doing a better job of promoting events and Town Halls that we'll be doing and having different themes and topics such as housing, any senior services, any kind of activities that are going on in our community. And we really want to let you know that we are having our community recognition awards that happen in July, and then also our annual multicultural festival that happens in October. And there's actually two vacancies in our, on our CAG. There's actually seven of us, so I know that that's out there on the website, the city website, but there is openings if you'd like to join our All Volunteer Board for the city of Oxnard. I just do really want, I know that we mentioned there was only 60 people here, but the crowd is diverse, old, young, seniors, culturally diverse, and I really want to commend all of you for taking the effort to come on a Monday evening and taking the time and also making the commitment to our youth. So, thank you again. And I'm going to call motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor? Thank you.